Hello, everyone. Welcome to Lockdown Lunch with me, Kelly Ransom. I'm coming to you live from Boston, Massachusetts. And I started this broadcast about over a month ago when I realized I was going to be locked down um to bring in my friends and talk to them about their experiences during lockdown and share their stories. And just to make sure that I get up in the morning and shower and put clothes on. So um thank you for tuning in. And I'm gonna get right to our guest because she's a very busy person. Um it is my absolute honor and pleasure to introduce one of my heroes today as our guest, Boston City Councilor-at-Large Anisa Asavi George. Hello.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. It's so good to see you. It's so good to see your face. It's so good to hear your voice. And um before I get too far into just blabbering as politicians do, thank you for the every Wednesday check-in.
Oh, you're welcome.
That's a good job checking in. And it um warms my heart and it makes me um love you even more.
Oh.
So happy to be here and I'm reporting live from the Stitch House. As soon as I got um sort of word and uh we were sort of made aware of the initial lockdown, I thought to myself, we'll be locked down for a couple of weeks, two weeks, because sort of everybody was living their lives in a two-week timeframe. And I thought about all the things I'm gonna do with my time and whether it was so, whether so for myself I should clarify, whether we do a little deep cleaning at the house, sort the kids, the the boys have a really great collection of T-shirts. And um I really have wanted to make them one of those T-shirt quilts.
Oh, cute.
And then I got sucked into this other world and I think we're eight weeks in now.
Yeah.
But I am very happy. I have my Stitch House, my business up the street to sort of escape to. So that's where I'm coming from is the Stitch House.
I love it. So Anisa is in Dorchester. She is a city councilor-at-large. We'll talk about what that is in a second. She's a small business owner, which she mentioned Stitch House. And I consider herself, consider her a mask maker extraordinaire at this point.
And then also, just so your uh your viewers are aware, I'm also via phone tuning into the rest of my budget hearing that um. So at some point, if I dip out for a second, I'll stay on camera, but I'm in my line for my questions on our city's budget. So if any of you viewers, because they can chat, have questions around our transportation budget, type them in.
We can post them, absolutely. I love it. This is um, this is a special treat for people. I don't think a lot, I don't, I don't know if a lot of people realize how much goes into the budget with the city council, but it's like so many hearings.
Yeah, I think we have um about thirty hearings.
Oh, my God.
Because it's all virtual right now this time around. Um we are also doing these working sessions online and then doing some staff clinics online because it all has to happen through Zoom uh for us. So there's just, it's a lot of extra prep work, but that's good because our budget, you know, when we talk about what does the city council do? One of our most important things that we do, our most important functions is uh reviewing and passing or not passing, but authorizing the city's spending. And our city's budget is three and a half billion dollars.
Oh, my God.
From that, um just over a billion, 1.4 billion dollars or so goes to our schools. And as Chair of Education, as a former teacher, as a BPS parent, as a BPS grad, uh that spending is really important to me. So I do sort of double down on those education hearings uh from a budget perspective as well as everything else. But uh we have a, we have a lot going on as a city. We obviously have a lot going on with this pandemic, with the COVID-19 crisis. Uh but the regular work continues and uh our budget process continues differently, but it continues.
Yes. I have to ask you, what day is it? Because I'm not sure.
And I had to think about it for a second, Kelly. It's a Thursday. Um I, it's May, let's say, May 7th.
Yes.
And I only know that because yesterday was Wednesday, which is our usual council meeting day. And it was May 6th, which is the day that the governor's mask order went into effect. And I know we're gonna talk about masks.
Oh, we're gonna talk about masks. So um just so, so the city council works on the budget. But for those watching at home who are not in Boston or just don't know, what is the click notes of what an at-large Boston City Councilor does?
Sure. So the Boston City Council is made up of thirteen members. Nine are elected in a district, so they represent a portion of the city. And then four of us, myself included, are at-large, which means we represent the whole city. And we're elected by every resident in the city of Boston. And that's sort of the difference. Um we have the same voting powers. We have sort of the same authority, all thirteen of us. Um city councillors at-large tend to, not always, tend to focus on sort of a more uh uh we, we sort of look at the issues in a more global way, but that doesn't, that's not necessarily true. I get into the weeds and issues, certainly in Dorchester where I live. I get into the weeds and issues in uh things in East Boston, it's where I taught for thirteen years. I get into the weeds and issues across our city and it.
You're all over.
I'm all over. I'm at-large.
You're, you work very hard and you have people in your office who cover every little corner of the city.
I do. And you see in the background here Karen Foley, who works in my office. Oh, Kelly knows Karen well. Karen, come say, just give us a wave. There we are. Hi, everybody.
That's amazing.
Karen has been with our office since um I was elected and sworn in in January 2016. And she uh, her and I both uh when that quarantine came into place, we said, alright, where, like, how can we make sure that our work is continuing? And we sort of met here at the Stitch House because it's sort of a safe, we're closed for business.
Right.
Closed space that we can do our work. And the two of us are tag teaming this mask initiative, doing our city council business, answering all of the phones. So we're answering the city council phones that have been forwarded to our lines, obviously checking email and trying to tune in that way. Tuned in to our um budget hearings and community meetings and then filling uh mask orders. And I just, I, I, a few things. One, yeah, I can't believe that I spend um a good portion of my day making masks. It's typically the second half of my day, late at night, Karen and I are here making masks. And um I can't believe that I'm making masks in May, which is my new, my new hashtag.
Making masks in May?
The frontline shows me.
How did it all be, how did this mask initiative begin? Like, you just?
Yeah.
How did you come up with it?
Again, I, I was so, a, a time long, long ago. Um I can't even, it's, I gotta laugh or I'll cry. I promise you, that's a true statement. Um so again, when we got this initial lockdown order or stay-at-home order, not lockdown order, but stay-at-home order, I thought to myself, okay, I have a couple of sewing projects I've wanted to do. Like, I'm gonna, you know, work from home. The kids are now home for at least a couple of weeks. And uh we're gonna, you know, make sort of a little bit of an adventure out of this. And um I saw a couple of like mask patterns. I was like, oh, is that gonna become a thing? It was sort of like sitting in the back of my mind. And then a friend of mine that teaches here at the Stitch House reached out, Stephanie Cave. And she said, uh, Anisa, I'm starting this Boston area mask initiative. Can the Stitch House be a place? Can we drop off? Can you donate fabric? And I'm like, oh, yeah, we'll do that. We hold a host of virtual sew-along. So we did the virtual sew-along and I was like, oh, shoot. Like, real quickly, I was like, this is gonna be a thing.
Yeah.
And so it started off, I'd started off sort of slow and steady. And Stephanie um Cave, who is the lead organizer, has just done amazing work. And her crew of a couple of hundred uh volunteer sewers, which I consider myself one of them, um as a group, I think we've made over twenty thousand masks. Her ticker on the Boston area mask initiative doesn't include mine because I, I um have been doing a few special things with the masks that we've been making uh here at the Stitch House. Um and now I'm, you know, I do my morning calls in the morning, my council work. I, we're involved in our budget hearings. And then sometime in the afternoon, late afternoon, we switch over to this mask-making uh mask-making madness. And uh here we are in May, making masks. And the frontline had said to me, the end of March, and this is, this is sort of where it came from. He said to me, the end of March, you're gonna be making masks in May. I said, I'm not making masks in May. There is no bloody way I'm making masks in May. I'm not doing this. This is a novelty. It's fun. We're gonna get to the other side and I'm gonna go back to my, to regular work. The kids are gonna go back to regular school. I'm gonna go back to community meetings, seeing people, hugging people. And um here we are in May, I'm making masks. We're four, four thousand masks in.
Just at Stitch House.
Just through the Stitch House.
Oh, my God.
Just through Karen and I um as part of that larger effort, yes. Um but along the way, so in the beginning, I was like, I'm gonna make a couple of masks. Neighbors were coming in. Um a few food pantries that I was connected to had come in and needed a half a dozen or a dozen or twenty. And I was like, yeah, the mayor called, I need a couple of masks, Anisa. We're gonna start encouraging people to wear face coverings. Can you make me a couple of masks for me and the team? Yeah, 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 we'll do it, we'll do it. And then um, you know, people would say, oh, let me pay you. I go, I don't, you know, I'm very fortunate that I'm still working. Uh we're good. Um my employees here at the Stitch House, while we're closed, they're good. We'll be okay. I have a stash of fabric to make all of these masks.
Of course you do.
It's fine. I go, when this is over, buy me a drink. Get me a glass of wine. And like someone that came in and got a whole bunch of them for their group, I was like, bring me a bottle of wine. That'll, that'll work.
Perfect.
Then, then the order started really trickling in. I said, alright, we should do something because people wanna contribute.
Right.
Started collecting five, suggested donation of five dollars a mask to support the Winter Walk, which does a lot of outreach within the um, within organizations that's worked to end family homelessness, family homelessness in particular, which is really important to the two of us. And I was like, alright, we'll raise a few hundred dollars. And then I was like, oh, maybe we'll hit three thousand dollars. And then as we hit three thousand dollars, I was like, I think we're gonna hit five thousand dollars. And we were on a group call, our Family Shelter Roundtable, which you were a big part of when you were in our office.
We're not still happening.
We had a group call with the mayor. So I, Ari Barbenell from Winter Walk, I said, Ari, we're at thirty-seven hundred dollars. We're gonna hit five thousand. And the mayor had already been on the call, but the meeting didn't start. He goes, oh, what are you doing? So I explained it to him. He goes, you're short thirteen hundred to hit five? I said, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. He goes to Ari, this is on the Zoom call, it was a really wonderful sort of uh moment. Uh he says, Ari, send me an email. My foundation will cover that thirteen hundred, right?
Oh, my God.
Hit five thousand dollars. It's so fantastic. Um last night, uh so we've been taking donations here at the shop. We've been doing Venmo. We've been doing online.
Yeah.
Um last night, Ari um messaged me that she had on hand ninety-three hundred dollars. Karen, what are we outstanding for a deposit?
A couple, a couple thousand.
So we are.
Wow.
Over ten thousand dollars.
That's so amazing.
So excited about it. I'm so, so excited about it. Um because we're obviously helping an organization that's really important to me and the work that you do is amazing. Um but we're, we're raising that money while helping people with something that they really need. And we've had, you know, it's an asked donation, so not everybody's able to give. And and that's fine because we've had so many people come in here and they're like, Anisa, I really only need four masks. Here's a check for a hundred bucks. I need six masks. Here's a, like, and so people have been so incredibly generous. Um and that generosity um has extended just far beyond I ever imagined. This afternoon, we've got uh the first half of an order going to the Engagement Center. So a nurse practitioner that works with healthcare for the homeless um really thought it was important that some of her um, her guests have access to pretty masks because sterile, sterile ones are, it's important to have those, but they're kind of gross. Um you know, they're just plain and there's nothing to them. And she thought it was important for some of the uh, the women in particular that she's working with, that they have access to a pretty mask.
I love it.
And our masks are cotton, they're washable, they're reversible. I'm gonna pull out a couple of my favorite in a few minutes.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's just been gratifying all around. And to have my two worlds sort of collide, to be able to, uh thank you, to be able to work um, to be able to do my council work and do this mask piece, sort of that second half of the day. And to know that I can support our residents in a really special way has been really very cool. And to do it with Karen every single day is also an added gift.
It's just so incredible and amazing and uh you're, you're brilliant.
Well, I don't know if I'm brilliant. Um Stephanie's the one that came up with the idea.
You're all brilliant for doing it, though, like.
Yeah, no, and I feel, I feel great. Uh, you know, I, my mother taught me how to sew when I was six years old and what a great gift she's given me. And um, you know, and I get to do it in my business. I get to uh, I, you know, I live up the street, as you know, so I get to force my children to come down and check on me, so my kids. And all this. I get to escape from homework hell. Um but they, you know, they've been really great. Luckily, they're a little bit older. I really feel for families that have younger kids at home that really have to work with their kids through this school-from-home time. Um my boys are a little bit older, older. In many ways, they're a little bit more motivated, not in that many ways, but they're more or less motivated to do their work.
Right.
Listen to come down and say hello to me every day. Um I encourage them to bring some of their work with me so we can be together. Karen and I have had them come down and have a little bit of lunch with us.
Oh.
But it's good.
I love it.
I'm gonna share some of my favorites, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah. And then I wanna, I wanna know how people can um get involved and get a mask and donate and all that stuff, too.
Yeah, so the Boston Area Mask Initiative um is on Facebook and online, bostonareamaskinitiative.com and I think we have .org as well.
Okay.
Put in requests. We're filling requests for different organizations, up to two hundred and fifty masks. They're healthcare organizations, senior living homes, um schools. Like, it's just really been an amazing group of people that have reached out uh not just to help, but that are in need.
Yeah.
And there's a form to fill out to either ask for a donation of masks. And then there's a form to fill out if you want to become a volunteer and be a part of the sewing army. We, we have actually a town hall this evening. So if you go to Facebook, is where it's sort of most actively updated. We have a town hall this, this evening to sort of update on the work of the, of the initiative. And then um on Friday nights, we typically do our Zoom virtual sew-along.
Love it.
So we sew, we chat. Um some of us have a glass of wine. And some of us, there are some people that are sewers or just wanna tune in and see what we're up to, which is, which is a whole lot of fun. So.
So show me some.
Yeah, so I'm gonna show you. So I took um, this is one of our favorite things to do. We've got, you know, we think it's a difficult sometimes for people to really put this face covering on. It's a change in habit.
Right.
We've taken some cool T-shirts and turned them into masks. This is my Stitch House T-shirt.
Oh, cute.
Yeah, that I've turned into a mask. Um this ear loop, simple, simple. We're using one of the simpler patterns because we're making so many of them.
Right.
And right now, if you were to Google uh uh cloth mask pattern, you'd find so many different options and some of them are really, really good. This is a T-shirt that someone brought to me and said, I don't want it back. These are just some cool T-shirts if you wanna cut them up. So I, I swiped one for myself because it's my most favorite.
Oh, cool.
E local, it's the skeleton. But my most favorite thing is the way that the mustache is.
It's right over.
How they line up.
That's a good one. It's so cute.
Um and then this is a Hawaiian shirt someone brought us to cut up because the uh member of their family was really into Hawaiian stuff. So it's got little luau girls on.
Oh, cute.
Adorable.
I love that there's a fashion aspect.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's, there's sparkles. Karen will not allow me to make any with sequins.
I like, I actually searched and asked my friend Bea yesterday to help me find a blinged-out glamour mask.
Well, so I do, all of the masks that we've made, with very few exceptions, have all been made from fabric from my stash. So there's a lot of bright colors and um flowers and it's a lot of brightness. So we've had um, we've only worked from my stash. We've had, we, I have that much fabric collected.
Real, I'm honestly not surprised.
A couple of guys would come in, be like, I really want something a little bit more tuned down, toned down or whatever. So I grabbed a couple of old men's shirts, right, to make some out of.
There we go.
This by accident. And then shirt, right. This by accident, the way it landed, when I cut the pattern out, that shirt pocket landed right in the front, like, so you could put your tee pass in it. You could. So anyway, so that's, that's that one there. And then I have mine. Mine's kicking around somewhere. I leave it so if someone does come to the door, I throw it on. But my sort of, my pink one, because those are my.
Of course, it's pink. So how long does it take to make one?
Um so when Karen and I are in our zone, late afternoon, we get to our sewing. I do all the sewing, the cutting and sewing, and Karen does all the ironing. Sometimes, um sometimes we have a helper that will come in and do some of the pinning. But the sewing itself is about two minutes of sewing.
Okay.
There's two rounds of sewing, two times that I sew, uh and each is about a minute each. And um so we figure, start to finish, if we also include taking a break um to chit-chat or to have a laugh um or at night, the end of, towards the end of the night to have our.
That's right.
Um it takes about five, we, we, we guess about five minutes a mask. And that being, that's being conservative or um, that's being generous with our time. We, when we get into the zone, like on the weekends when we're filling some of those big orders, like the Engagement Center, for example, we're like zipping through. Was it, but it's a seven-day week operation. And um we're here, we're here most nights till eleven. Sometimes we'll go home early at ten. Uh we're here, we're here till eleven. Sorry, I just got distracted. I wanna make sure that I get in on my hearing.
Yes. No, do whatever you have to do. That's more important than this, but.
Well, I mean, it's, it's important, I think, for um, it's always important for us to talk. Uh but I think it's important for your uh viewers and for the public to understand sort of what a typical day looks like, especially during this time.
Right. And this is real life. I've told guests, like, I've had guests have their babies crawling on them and.
Yeah.
You know.
And coffee cup is this big to get through the day.
I'm on my, I'm on my uh, my tea.
I love it.
My second one. Um so if they're simple to make, I guess, if you wanted to make them at home, you could just Google.
Yeah, you can Google, you know, we're using what's called the deaconess pattern. I've modified it just slightly. We are not doing the filter. Some patterns do have a pocket to put in a real filter. Um but ours are washable and they are, you know, some, some medical providers, care, frontline care providers have been using them to double up. We've had a number of nurses come through that are looking for something just to wear to and from work because that surgical mask does, you know, it, it, I think it wears your psyche out in, in a certain way. Um so to have, you know, we find that most people wanna have two masks each so that one could be washed.
Yeah, that's me.
But it's also, it is, um, there's something, I think there's a great psychological benefit to having a pretty mask or face covering.
Yes.
Um, you know, that's, that's what we've been trying to do. Now, to get some of our um, some of our guys to wear something that's a little bit more bold, um that's been a challenge, especially because my fabric is, my fabric supply is a little limited when it comes to toned down and neutral.
Yeah.
Um but again, we'll, we will eventually dip into the sequins. Don't tell Karen.
Well, I can't wait to make my donation either way, but.
No, thank you so much.
So let's say we, we're in a different world and this is over and you're not making masks anymore somehow. Um what is some of the work that's gonna like lie ahead or, you know, the, the budget's gonna get passed? And then you have, you do so much. I'm just curious.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I do, you know, I'm, I'm happy that I'm able to do the masks, but I do look forward to life after masks, mask making. Um but I will say, and I think it's important to note, um for a lot of families, for a lot of residents, for you, for me, even though we are in sort of this, what feels like a parallel universe of.
Yeah.
Um staying at home, of not doing sort of what we typically would do on a, on any given day or, or weekend or night or whatever it is, um that like sort of real life does continue. So we've got this, you know, especially as a city council, so much of our work is focused around this pandemic and responding to this pandemic. But the budget process continues. Making sure that our schools have the investments they need continues. We have families that are still experiencing homelessness. We've got work and that space to do. Substance use disorder and the opioid epidemic continue. Improperly discarded needles, you know, are still an issue and was part of my questions in this morning's hearing around our city's capacity to continue picking up needles. Like, the, the world does continue.
Right, yeah.
It's important, although we're sort of distracted by this pandemic, which it's not, I don't wanna minimize this pandemic because it's a pandemic and we have to be focused on it, especially as policymakers and lawmakers and as a city government. But, you know, we still have to make sure that the rest of the city's functions are happening, that they're funded, that they're ongoing, that we still respond to. Although City Hall and our City Council office is technically closed, we are still answering those phones. Karen is still responding to constituent requests. Um Rachel, who's the Director of Policy in my office, is still working on food policy and food access, especially as it relates to our families experiencing homelessness. Um Jessica, you know, who's Chief of Staff, is still spending hard days and nights prepping for budget cycle.
Of course.
And we have um, you know, we just, we still have community meetings, which they took a little bit of a pause, but now those are just all online.
Wow, that's awesome. I mean, that's like.
Really great. It's really great.
Impressive.
I love that they're happening video, that sort of the video chat is happening, not just conference call. Because I think that seeing each other's face, faces is so important and such a critical piece to that mental wellness as well.
Do you ever get a little burnt out from being on video so much? Because I definitely am.
Yeah, I, they um, there's a, there's a phrase for that. There's some sort of um, um, like there's something, there's a, there's a phrase that they're referring to being like zoomed out or something.
Yeah, that's how I've been feeling lately, so much, like.
Yeah, um I have like mixed, what my problem is and sort of the, what I deal with day in and day out. Like, so, so I feel like I'm riding those regular roller coaster rides as everybody else. Like, I'm not, you know, I'm in the, trying to be in the midst of this budget cycle, trying to make sure that my kids are getting the things that they need, except for supper. I'm not ever worried about them getting supper. Um that's what takeout's for, and so supporting the local economy.
Yes.
I own that a hundred percent. Um I've got lots of people, friends of mine, that have gotten into, and you're a fabulous cook, and so many people are really embracing this opportunity to stretch their uh uh um culinary skills.
Yeah.
Never was a thought of.
Not you.
On the weekends, I will do pancakes and giant golden waffles. And, you know, during the week, I'll do scrambled eggs for the kids, but no, no interest in learning how to.
Oh, you have, you have four boys at home and doggy.
Yeah, they can handle it. They're good.
They're fine.
But I do find, you know, I do find in a way, thinking about mental health and thinking about making sure that our residents are well, that there are moments that I'm not okay. Because I am an extrovert. I wanna be out. I wanna be at community meetings. I wanna, you know, from, in a professional way, I wanna be out and about. My shop is closed. My knitters, the, the folks that come in to take sewing classes, like they miss being with each other. Um and that sense of connectedness is, can really weigh on you. So I know I've had moments where I'm like, I just wanna go out. I wanna go see my friends. I wanna go dancing with my sisters. There were just things that I wanna do um that I can't do. My kids wanna go play sports. They have baseball.
I didn't even think of that.
Yeah, it's, and it's so difficult for them to not be able to experience those things. And we know in the greater scheme of things that this is what we have to do. Um and I have my moments that I'm not okay. And it's okay to not be okay as long as you can reach out to the support services that are around you. And still, um too many people don't have a support service. So May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Um and they, you know, so May, I'm sorry, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And, you know, you can call 311, the city's hotline, to get uh connected with resources. You have to do it if you, if you feel that you've got the need. If you don't, if you don't have a support service or a support network around you, please reach out. Because there are gonna be moments, you know, and I can say, I have moments where I'm not okay. But I've got great friends like you, Kelly, that do that check-in and make me feel sort of stable and on solid footing. But we know too many people don't. You have to call and you have to reach out. Um I find myself, I think, how I deal with some of that anxiety is I pour myself into my work, into my budget. Pour myself into my sewing. I pour myself into, you know, getting sucked into the news at night. Um but carving time out to do nothing, I, you know, I, I. Um, but carving time out to do nothing, I, you know, I, I, this last Sunday was my triplets turned fourteen and I, I literally spent a half an hour alone with a, with a frosty drink, um, but by myself with my knitting. So I'm in my shop all day long, but I don't have a minute to knit.
Right, you're a knitter.
But to spend that thirty minutes, I felt like a little pain of guilt. And then I was like, uh-uh, I'm owning this. But I had to own it. And the way to own it was I posted it on, on Twitter. I'm doing it. And I'm telling all of you.
Yes.
Cuz you have to carve this time out for you. Uh, but then it does remind me that there's so many people that are sick, that aren't well, that are dealing with Corona or dealing with other illnesses or other trauma, um, that don't have those resources and that, that makes me, makes me really sad.
It worries me too. So you said, I ask, so I need to, I need to preface this with a little bit. So when I used to work in Anisa's office, um, she's a huge advocate for mental health. And, um, I wasn't taking my very seriously, like, at all. And it took me a really long time to get comfortable, uh, doing what I needed to do for my mental health. And working with Anisa, she's such an inspiration and she's so honest about that it's, it's okay to not be okay. That like, I slowly, you know, I left and I went elsewhere and was working elsewhere and it's, it's stuck with me forever. So now I see a therapist. Now I take medication. I'm very lucky that I get to do that. And, um, I don't think I would have ever gotten there had I not seen the work that Anisa's been doing and how important mental health is. And then I started this because I was just like, I need something that is different. I just need something. I need a project. I need something to do. So I started this broadcast and it really stems from doing something good for my mental health, so.
I love hearing that. And thank you for sharing that. And it's so personal. It's so wonderful. It's so beautiful at the same time. Um, I, you have a gift. You, you, you do. You have a gift and you have to share it. And that's, you know, similar to how I feel about my masks. I don't particularly wanna be making masks. Like, rather than sewing a hundred other things. I'd rather be do, I, there's a hundred other things I'd rather be doing. But it's.
Same.
The gift that I have that, and it's something I can do and it's something that people need. This is something, this is a gift that you have. Um, you bring people together.
Whatever this is.
All sorts of, and you, and you, you, you recognize that there's a need and that fulfills, I hope that it fulfills you. This fulfills me. Um, and if there were, if, if I could cook, maybe I'd be cooking. I don't want to. I actually don't want. But when we have these gifts, we have to share them. We have to.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I never knew that Pandemic Kelly needed to be a talk show host, but I, I had a therapy session. She was like, what, what do you wanna do? And I was like, I don't know, share people's stories?
What is your name?
See my friends.
You have a wonderful way of connecting with people. Um, and you, but, and you need to continue doing that outside of Pandemic Kelly.
She's just in survival mode right now, but she'll get there. But I, 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 so, I made it a point on every single one of these broadcasts, no matter who's on, I ask them towards the end, um, what they are or not, what they are or aren't doing for their mental health. And it really stems from recognizing that that's important and there's a stigma to talk about it. And I think that, you know, the more people that are out in public talking about it, and especially you as a leader, the, the stigma gets less and it becomes a bigger conversation. Um, so I have to ask you, cuz I ask everyone, you said you took thirty minutes for yourself, but what are some other things that you've been doing or not been doing for your mental health during all this?
Yeah, I mean, I think that for my mental health, one thing that I do worry a little bit about is, um, da, like diving into the mask making and being here until eleven o'clock at night. Like, there are, like, that's late, especially I often crack it on.
I'm not even up done.
I'm not, I'm not, um, you know. And, and so finding that balance between wanting to do something for other people and then also like shutting it down at a particular point. So something that Karen and I have started to do is we'll like check in with each other and say, okay, what time we calling it quits tonight? Like, and just doing that check-in. Um, and like when we screw up, we laugh about it.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, I, I find those, you know, the silly masks and we, you know, sometimes complain about some of the crazy requests we get for masks and find sort of the humor in that. Because again, if we can't laugh about it, we might cry about it. But I'd say in the same, in the same breath, that if, you know, if you feel like you need to or you wanna cry, then you should cry because that's the body's way of releasing, whether it's, you know, a particular tension or a particular worry. I'm worried. I'm worried. And we, we deal with worry and anxiety in different ways. I'm worried about, you know, sort of generally, I'm worried about everybody that I care about. People I don't know, as a city council, I'm worried about people's health. I don't want any other residents in our city to become sick. I certainly don't want anyone to die. I want them to have access to the care that they need.
Yeah.
And then I'm, you know, I'm worried about, you know, how this impacts my kids not being in school. I worry about my boys wanting and finding the right balance to say, all right, walk up to the corner store and get yourself a stupid bag of potato chips and a soda. But also saying, I really wanna keep my kids home because I don't want them to be exposed. Or, um, you know, them missing, being my mother, their, their Doug's mother, their grandmother on the other side. Like, that worries me that they don't have those connections, but I also know it's the right thing to do. But then it was a triplet's birthday, so do I relax a few of those restrictions so my mother can do the drive-by? But then I have one kid that's really anxious about being even like within six feet of her, saying, he's a little bit older. She may have underlying issues. We have a good family friend of ours that's an EMT, um, who has asthma. And she's, we're very, very close to her, the boys. She is an aunt to the boys. She's a sister to me. And the boys knew at one point, she was on, we're calling it the protocol. So she had contact with somebody who was infectious and sick. And so she was put on the protocol. One of my boys was just so incredibly worried about her because he knows she has asthma and he knows there's an underlying issue. And, um, you know, so talking to young people about what's the real fear and what's a not, not a real fear. But we, we should be afraid. We should be worried. But we also need to find like balance in all of that.
Yes.
And then we haven't talked about small businesses, which is so important to you.
I know, another thing.
And, you know, I'm in a position where closing my business for a little bit, you know, my employees are good and we're good. So we're fine, but we know from so many businesses that this is gonna crush, crush not just their business, but their family because their families rely on that business. You know, Mother's Day is, um.
Sunday?
Sunday. And flower shops, flower shops, this is the biggest business days of the year. So I'm happy that the governor relaxed some of the, some of the guidelines. But we know that it's good for some of these small guys. It's gonna be really hard to come back from it. Um, you know, so I had planned on ordering a bunch of flowers for this weekend. Doug had already pre-ordered mine, which was good, except for my mother, except for his mother. Um, but, you know, my, what I encourage everyone to do that's listening is, you know, order flowers next week and the week after and the week after. Um, and then buy gift certificates if you're able from the businesses that you love so much. And when they do reopen, cuz we all eventually will hopefully reopen, save them for a little bit longer, um, so that we can get some cash flow into our local businesses. And that's gonna happen. We are gonna get to a point where we're gonna start actively talking about reopening.
I can't wait.
I can't wait either. I can't wait to go out with you and spend some time with you at the Bella Luna.
I know. I miss Bella Luna so much. Um, I miss so many of, not just restaurants, just stores too, that I go to all the time, like.
Yep, yep, yep.
We'll get there. I'm hopeful.
We have a lot to do on the other end. And the unfortunate reality is some businesses won't be able to open up.
No.
reopen after this is over. And that makes me really sad. Makes me really sad. And it just, it, it magnifies and, um, really creates a greater awareness of the, the work that we have left undone to support small businesses, to help women in particular in, in business, to build stronger businesses, should something like this ever happen again, that they're in a much better position going into this type of environment.
Ugh.
I love you, Kelly.
I love you! I wanna, I, I need to ask, have you been watching anything or reading anything?
Yeah, I watched The Office reruns, which.
Good.
My, my, I just love The Office. Uh, but I do a lot of CNN. I do get sort of sucked in during these times. I get a little sucked into the news. Um, and then local.
Probably not too.
Local news, of course. And then my favorite thing to do, um, is watch budget hearings and ask great questions during those budget hearings.
What a good answer. So for those of you who are new watching, thank you so much. I wanna, uh, let you know that I do this piece at the end where the guest has the opportunity to have the final word. Um, this just started out as a way for me to put on all the different sunglasses that I have, that I wanna wear. Uh, but now it's become a really cool part of the show where I sit back, I shut up, I give the guest the floor to say something inspirational, share resources, tell jokes, shout out people. I don't care what they do, so.
Wear their favorite.
It's your turn and the floor is yours.
Well, first, I'm gonna wear my favorite mask for Phil and Tell. It is, um, you know, I hope that everyone at home has the ability to find something to cover their face. And it doesn't have to be a fancy mask, just something pretty, um, or not pretty, it can be ugly. Whatever you wanna wear, cover your face when you're out in public, uh, please going forward. And, you know, for, i- if you are in need of a mask, if you have an organization in particular that's in need of masks, please reach out. Uh, my email is a.e.joerg@boston.gov. Um, or you can look up the Boston Area Mask Initiative and, and support some of the work that's happening there. I, um, I just, I really want, uh, people to stay at home. We are not through this yet. We sort of see some promise on the other end and then the next few weeks will really show, um, what the future's gonna hold for us, especially for the summertime. But, uh, this is, Kelly, this is such a great gift that you have, that you're sharing. And, um, we should all, we should all be so lucky to have a friend like you and someone like you in our lives to, um, to have check-in on us.
You're gonna make me cry, so it's time to stop.
Sunglasses, by the way.
The, I bought these specifically to wear marching with you in the future, so.
I love it.
I love any excuse to wear pink. So anytime Anisa has a thing, I'm like.
Let's go. Blow off the pink.
So thank you, thank you, thank you so, so much. Um, I know you're busy and you have budget hearings, but you took the time out of your day to do this and talk to all the people watching now and later. And I just appreciate it and I can't wait to see you again in person. Um, I wanna thank everyone for tuning in, for liking, sharing, commenting, watching now, watching later, all that stuff. You guys are amazing. I can't believe that we're doing this together, but it's, I guess it's fun. Um, Anisa, I love you. You're one of my heroes. Um, and tomorrow, we have another guest. I hope you all will tune in. We have Tess McColligan. She is the Program Manager for Rosendale Village Mean Streets. We're gonna talk about more talking about, uh, supporting small businesses during this time. And she's gonna read us a story. I don't know what she's.
Very good, very good.
Who wants to read a story? So everyone, thank you so much. Thank you, Anisa. Please stay home, wash your hands, wear a mask and look into the Boston Mask Initiative.
Boston Area Mask Initiative.
Yes.
And, um, it's okay to be not okay.
It's okay to be not okay.
Reach out if you need some help.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I love you all. I will see you tomorrow. Goodbye.